All right, we will start the evening by calling to order the public hearing on the expenditure funds from the equipment, the press, the equipment trust fund. That proposed expenditures for the purchase of pitching machines was one of the items that we had moved to the budget. They can have some funds in the trust funds fish in cover that. We have originally estimated thirty five hundred. It looks like it's coming in just under that at thirty three twenty four seventy three. So does anyone have any questions about that or comments?
I'll make a motion that we already get a post camp first, sorry.
Okay, hearing none, then we will, I guess we will close the the comment period of the variant and move to a vote.
I make a motion that we purchase the machine accessories for three thousand three hundred twenty but all seventy three cents out of the equipment C I P for just.
A second.
Tammy, Jasmine, and any further discussion? Hearing done, all those are favorite, if I was saying I, I posed extensions and that motion carries. And we will call it's a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So.
Thank Kevin. Thank Kevin, always a favorite, so if I'm saying I, I, that is adjourned and that we will call to order the regularly scheduled school board hearing. Hearing meeting. The the first order of business is the approval of the minutes. I guess unless there's an objection, we will approve the minutes for the public and not public sessions of April ninth. By consent. Seeing objections, then those those minutes are approved. Next is correspondence. They received an invitation from the North Country Charter Academy to attend the graduation ceremony. So I think it's an invitation to anyone on the board.
When is that?
That is Thursday, May twenty nine, five thirty P M at the Mount New Brad.
Did probably generally attend, yeah.
So there'd be representation.
Yep.
Great.
Other than that, I do not believe we have received any additional correspondence. Doc said, you have any other correspondence?
Correspondence from the town about zoning.
Oh.
Best of hearing against and a bladder and a button.
Oh, and a button.
Oh, so the launch, one module that they're trying to.
But it's over on Franklin's.
Franklin.
Franklin.
Wait, I don't know.
Oh.
Depends on what they're doing. Oh, an accessory apartment. Yeah, it's on certain things, you have to go out more than just the neighboring, you have to go further, two or three hours depending.
Do we, is this the the guy who has the little development at the end of West Street?
The front, Franklin.
Franklin.
The treehouse.
So there's a greenhouse development by.
No, this is sixteen Franklin. Existing one story, single family restaurant residence with expanded features for.
You said sixteen Franklin Street.
Yeah.
Single family restaurant.
Restaurant, that's not a good restaurant.
One table over the residence.
Exactly, there's only one table, of course, that's it.
The internet is not working, so I can't find the map.
I'll find it. They say sixteen Franklin.
I guess we just sort of need to figure out whether we want to do anything about it or adding anything to it or just, you know. Yeah, I think if if we had an issue, we could send representatives.
Yep.
But we could.
It's an accessory dwelling, so it's an accessory apartment. They're not building a club or anything, so. I can't see why the.
Have to notify you.
Yeah, I don't see why this school won't have any objection to that. It's not going to be anything detrimental to the school itself, so.
So the variants.
Well, you know, if it comes up.
Yeah. And it's not until May twenty first. So we have, we have another board meeting in week time. Okay, so we can look into that if we feel like we got something to. I don't know why we would, but. All right, that was the submission report.
Yeah, I have couple things. First of all, there's this week's payroll manifest and also next week's account feeable manifest. We're closing it, so you're trying to get everything out the door this week. Just something, I don't know if you've seen this in the news, but one of the bills right now that's being looked at is S B two ninety seven. And it's a bill regarding pooled insurance groups. And it's kind of creating some havoc across the states. There's three major pool health insurance groups in New Hampshire that service the majority of schools and municipalities in the state. Additionally, Primax handles the majority of schools and municipalities for for other insurances like general liability, workers comp and unemployment comp. And the, and the basically the pool groups, again, they were born for the municipalities and towns to help control huge fluctuations in the rates from year to year and and just overall benefit management of these plans for the public entities. Currently, and right now, there's been some improvement, there's stuff going on. The bill really is saying how they have to handle their reserves in any given year from one year to the next. And there was some study, there's currently are some laws about how they have to handle their reserves and how much they can hold. It's kind of like when towns have, you know, at the end of the year, they have fine balance and how much they can hold and how much they can't. But anyway, so it's kind of like that same idea, but they seem to be stricter rules and also if so during the year, like as claims come in, we have fluctuations month to month, but at the end of the year, it should all smooth out and because our rates are are based on your claims from one year, a lot of, a lot of the rating. Based on what they foresee or project our claims to be. So part of this bill is if there's, if there's a huge claims line and the reserve kind of dips down in that month, they're going to go out and build the schools and municipalities for that month, which is also, A, it's a lot of work on the insurance end. But the other thing they're saying is, well, you know, how are we going to pay for this? You know, and how are we going to come up with that cash? Because it could be quite substantial in any given month. So they attach something else to the bill saying, okay, you have to have a capital reserve. Well, you can't just have a capital reserve. Your voters have to approve to have a capital reserve. And we're having this discussion at our state meeting a couple weeks ago. And one of the schools said, we have in our bylaws that we can't have capital reserve accounts. So what happens if you don't have a capital reserve account? So there's just a lot going on. In fact, one of the pool groups is closing their doors at the end of June. They've already said, we're done, because this is going to just create havoc in how we handle business. So there's about thirty schools, I think, that are with that health insurance group in there. And they're, these are all in their bargaining groups. So they are scrambling right now to find insurance for their employees. So again, it's just, so the thing is that the bill just kind of came in very fast. They attached this capital reserve thing at the very end as it passed from the Senate now into the House. It needs a lot more study. And our insurance group, we have school care, they said, you know, we do business like that already, except for this capital reserve piece. So they're not that concerned by it, because they're already doing a lot of the same things. But there's just, you know, no one knows where this came from.
It sounds like you're on the lucky aunt right now.
Well, yeah.
More fortunate than those other districts.
The other major health insurance, I mean, they're like, you don't think if this goes in the play, we're going to have to close our doors too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they are him and, yeah, I don't know.
We're a lot better off in a lot of municipalities.
Yeah. So do you guys have school care or health care?
Health care.
Yeah, health care is one.
Yeah. And then we're, you're, you're limited by what you appropriated the funds too. So you can't spend more than you appropriated without approval from the D R A. And the D R A is saying now that that's not an emergency item because we know about. Yeah, that they're telling us now, so it's a known factor. So it can't be approved as an unknown, unanticipated expense. So, yeah, it's, it's a nightmare, yes, it's someone says, you know, and it seems to be flying right through.
Yeah.
There doesn't seem to be much opposition at all, which I don't understand either.
Yeah. They, I don't think they understand how the pool groups run anywhere, you know, to begin with. But anyway, so you might, again, there's been a lot of, I guess, there's been a lot of things in the union leader and just, yeah, possibly a lot, a lot happened. Yes, that's all I have for now.
Exactly.
We get the other items, but.
Is that it?
That's what I have here.
Thank you. Thanks. Very steady.
So in the updates, I gave you the information from our attorneys regarding those two policies, convention, Hampton School Board Association and the training we mentioned. I'm Drummond with them. And the first one is around policy A C A and wanting to look at why we couldn't, the school board shouldn't review the hearing that took place on Title Nine. And they consulted to hear from those school attorneys and felt that all of the school board members would now need to be freely trained in Title Nine if they were to be able to review all the documentation. It's to save time. With that, and if it was ever going to a board, by the time it got to the board, because it have been looking with the communities anyways. So to go back through that documentation, they're not recommending that, nor is Drummond with some in their training. So we can talk about that during the policy, but just so you have that update.
Okay.
And then the other policy, the language around A C F, around the U S B A, if it's not covered under the federal government, however, if there was ever anything to discrimination for gender identity, policy A C does cover us and state. So it just did not get, the reason they pulled gender identity out of there was because it's not covered in the federal statute. But we can talk about those a little bit more. You can read the write up from the attorneys. And then I did send in Title Six certification. There's still a pending letter. We have to do it by April twenty fourth, but we had a deadline. I did speak with our attorney to see if we could, should attach anything to it, saying, you have a tiny, yeah, best of our knowledge, based on what we understand it to be, which is selection based on grades. And I said, yes, but to put, so they gave me some language and I attached that to Title Six certification to say that hasn't been explained, it hasn't been defined up to the best of our knowledge. They just saw the article, we're not making selections based on this. That was sent in. We've had our community planning group meetings. This, we've had two. There's another one that'll be happening virtually in May. There's been some really great conversation. I don't know, Jasmine, if you want to share it all about, you know, watching videos and seeing some exemplars out there that was pretty interesting. And then they will send us the, they have a spreadsheet of fifty videos, maybe, of exemplar programming in schools that people could watch and preview. And I think we'll use that as a faculty meeting at some point to just showcase some other states where there are various things from student led conferences to kids be trained in avalanche management and how they incorporate that into their physics class.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they, I mean, the, the process has been a great experience so far, different than the last strategic planning committee. I mean, it was a great use of a virtual meeting. We broke into really effective groups, watched videos that helped us understand what, you know, what direction they're right, like how other schools do those processes. We've had the about, about the student led conferences. And it was a really great way to have that conversation and figure out how to move forward, so. I was pleasantly surprised at how well they managed remote meeting. It was not.
A lot of people, right, it was really effective and, yeah.
Yeah.
In your packet, you have something called the loud plan, which is how we will service kids who have English as a second language. You don't need to make a bolt on that necessarily. There's nothing required you to, but there is a recommendation to do it, so you guys.
That was reading through it.
That was, we have scanning through.
Yep, it's only K through twelve. We're not required to do preschool, not for five year olds either, not for loud, for specialized, yes, but not for, okay, gotcha. Interesting.
Yeah.
So this is a pretty comprehensive document, it seems like, with a lot of sort of specialized knowledge and stuff in there. So I don't know that it makes sense for, for it to be like reviewing or approving. From my perspective, this, this is a, this seems more like something that should be designed for, for people who know what.
Yeah, so it is, so you know, Dory Beeden and Joanne.
I said, hey.
Awesome.
Awesome. She, the two of them spent a lot of time developing this and then Nancy Bartlett over it. And then I sat with them. We went through section by section to make sure that it aligns with the law. We based it off our whole one that just hadn't been updated. And there was some stuff of the law that had been changed, so. But, yeah, you don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, I.
There is some recommendation that they say the board, but at least you have knowledge that we have. Probably important.
Right, and I think I just, you know, this is a little different than like, you know, a policy on what we do when people have too many absences, right? Like, we can set that policy. This seems like the type of thing that is better left to the professionals. That's my take on that out of everyone else.
I agree.
Although, let's give it to us. I read it.
For you to know that if you want this. And then, um, little, I, what I did was I put all of the meetings, I went through our calendar because it, after April break, it's going to go by pretty quickly. So you guys are aware of what's happening in the school. The only thing that didn't make it, because we just got confirmation, is that there'll be another family engagement night. It's May twenty, on May twenty eighth. And we've got confirmation where it'll be really around STEM focused. Now, families will use the glow forge and some letters.
Oh, fantastic.
These are those May.
May eighth. Yeah, and we'll get that on the next one.
Yeah, we'll have the exact time.
Found out today.
I think it's going to be beginning around five thirty, like setup of things. Is that, is that for elementary and little high school rostrating on that just on, yes.
They have all the dates there.
Oh, well, we have a board meeting that night. It's the second one, so it's there in case we need a is that goal setting?
Let me just double check to make.
Let's switch our goal setting meeting.
It says. Oh, I don't know.
We can, we can switch our goal setting.
We may not need that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not. Not the goal setting is important, but it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. All right, let's just about, thank you. Um, yeah, as we can see, we have a new banner behind us, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Kids Heart Challenge, right? Just, we did that last week and as usual, the kids have a blast. And high school students and middle high school students, our middle high, sorry, you know, help out with with that effort. And they raise funds and I have all kinds of prizes, so it is a.
The kids love it.
Yeah, they do. They really do.
And they come home talking about healthy hearts.
Yeah. Yes, that is good. Also, last week Spencer Arpin, who was a high school student, competed in the Woodsman competition at Bear Brook Park. And that was on the same day that we had that National Forestry Day. And that was part of his C T E class up from White Mountain Regional High School.
Very cool.
Yeah, he, he had, he said he had a blast. What, what does that entail? Just sawing, chopping, you know, yeah, I mean, you're, you're doing it.
Speed things and a lot of precision things. I've seen the.
Right, yeah, sawing those, you could saw like a nice disc from that wood and chopping and.
They have it at Sandwich Fair every year. It's hard to watch the kids do it. Yeah, the four age kids, I think. There's something to do with that. It's, it's really cool.
Yeah. Early act is going to start a recycling program at the elementary school. And then, you know, work with the town to expand it and and really, you know, hopefully kicks off and keeps going.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's, that's their whole plan on that. Today I sent out our last SAS testing reminder to parents. So that'll be grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and grade eleven. We'll do SAS testing starting when people come back from April break. So we'll start on May sixth and go through May.
Don't tell them.
No, we're not telling them yet.
Good.
Just going to all put them in a room and say like, good luck.
Well, I'm just thinking of this stress level. Gosh.
And of course, the senior trip tomorrow, right? They, they take off to their Florida trip. And they are so excited. We did bag check today.
That's why we treat, it's awesome. They did a great job.
They did. They did. They are so excited. Even though we have to be at school tomorrow morning at three forty five, leaving at four A M, that still is not daunting to them. They are just well excited. I am there. I'm driving home tonight, driving back for three thirty.
So what percent of the class is able to go?
I, I'm going to say close to like ninety eight percent.
Nearly, is there four students not going, is that right?
I, yeah, I'll, I'll check, but yeah, I don't know all the details, but it's, it's not, it's very few that are, that chose not to.
There's always one or two that doesn't.
I'm going to say, right now, I know of definitely two, two students out of the class that opted not to go.
Yeah, that's great. Fun, travel safe.
Yeah.
I know, they're, they're excited. And Megan Wool and her grade two, in the grade two classes, well, it says will be, but they actually did harvest the lettuce and.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and then they turned it into a nice little salad and taco bar.
Like they had tacos.
Yeah, so they had a, the kids were so excited and they loved everything that happened.
Yeah, every morning they're chucking and taking care of it. And I could get tea, took the water. They, wow.
That's fantastic. Yeah.
They really do.
I saw Ashley at a P T A meeting and she said the harvest of it was like so exciting. And they had like six or eight bags of.
Big bags.
That's awesome. That's very cool.
And, and I remember like the second graders, like during, when we had our student led conferences, they, you know, they asked this school, and then they asked me if they can just talk about hydroponics, because they were so excited. That was like, by all means, thanks.
I love it.
Didn't tax.
Yes.
Wearing a seat for little cucumbers interviews.
Excellent.
We went and checked it out while we were there.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, that was good. The kids are definitely excited, which is, which is really good to have. Yeah, middle school is competing in the American Library of Poetries, twenty ninth annual National Student Poetry. So April twenty second, which was yesterday, was the, was the deadline. So according to Mrs. Hood and Mrs. Boris, it's going well. They had a lot of entries, so they're excited. Once again, Megan Fool and Kristen Fadden with the Robotics Club will end the end of next month. And that was also another success, getting the kids excited about S E M and technology and everything. So hydroponics too, that's all part of that program that gets all excited about. Yeah, and then, as you know, we have advisories in the high school and that's during period five where they meet and also have their academic assistants. But Heather Grills class is going to help with the beautification of the state skate park. They're going to plant wildflowers. And they're also going to be planting some at the camp. So they're hopefully, they're going to start the seedlings in class and then hopefully by the end of May, transfer them.
Excellent.
Yeah, so she's very excited and the kids are very excited about that. And one more thing I just wanted to say that we did have a flag etiquette class for grade six. That was on, I believe last, yeah, last week, thank you. And John Ralph from Joseph New Smith Post eighty three came to ours, presented that. It was only to the sixth grade, because last year he did it to the whole middle school. So the seventh and eighth graders already had that. So they felt that it'd be better for the sixth grade to participate in that. So, yeah, so that was fun. It was another good day on that. Yes, you learn how to fold and how to destroy and I mean, not, you know, what, you know, the proper way to do everything on that. Yeah, not the proper way to destroy anything.
You know what you're saying.
Proper way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true, but I don't know if it sounded right.
To dispose of.
Yeah, dispose, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Tammy. You saved me on that one.
Cool. I love that they do that. That's great.
All right, next we have mini reports of the facilities. So we just have the the policies that are on for first and second reading.
Yep.
So the ones that are on for first reading, those are the ones that we sort of were held off on last week. Now we have some more clarification that, that we should just, our directives from, from the.
At the invasive council.
Yes, that we should just adopt those as written or approve them for second reading.
Right. Did anybody else have anything? Then I make a motion to move those three policies, A C, A C A and A C F to second reading.
Second, but Jasmine, any further discussion? All those favors in the pipe saying I, I posed extensions and that motion carries. Except is the ones on for second reading that we approved last week. I think one of the things, oh, sorry, in the, in the ones that we were, that we had for, on for first reading. The section where it says, you know, before it can add additional things in there, we're just going to take that out.
Yep.
So if anyone has any other comments on the policies on for second reading?
Maybe since they've been the teacher bringing their. Do you have any policy with them bringing their kids into their rooms that they're teaching?
No. Wait, what? If, this was talked about years ago, and I remember this conversation.
I know it's happened.
Yeah.
Instead of bringing their own kids into the classroom, but actually.
Being the teacher to their own stu, their own children, like if Dory taught Wyatt, correct?
Well, no, 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 this is bringing their kids in right now, that don't go, don't attend school.
Oh, they don't attend school. Oh, I don't know.
We have a policy against that, or should we have a policy against that?
Why, why would we?
I mean, I think we should, if, if you're.
Does this happen? Yeah.
It's, yes. I hate to even bring it up, because everybody thinks, oh, faith is all, I just stop faith is all me anything.
So, but we can talk about that.
No, I know it's happening. It's not just one person.
It's not just one. But what, I mean, what is the reason for it? Is it, is it?
Well, once it was because their kid was sick and didn't want to leave at home.
Yes. Well, the sick is, you shouldn't bring their kids to school. But if it's the, that, that child's school has an in-service day and there's no childcare available, the alternative is that we get a sub that we don't have. So would we rather have that teacher bring their kid in and do work in the classroom on their own?
I don't think they could really.
The other kid. It's not fair to them.
I, I love you, but I disagree.
Well, that's why I'm not, I'm just bringing it up because it's brought to me.
And I want to bring it to my board and go.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just say, I think that's outside of the scope of this policy. In terms of, this is just like actual enrolled students and not.
Yes, but if.
For example, in general, is there a policy?
Yeah, I mean, if, if this teacher has their kids in the school and they bring them into their classroom while they're trying to teach the other kids, then we have a policy against that. That's what I said.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Whether they're enrolled or not, if they brought them in, correct?
Because it would be disruptive, I mean, I think.
I mean, I guess that's. Your question is just, they're, they're in their like occupied space, they're not like being taught, they are just.
Exactly.
Childcare.
Or I'm gonna see somebody during the day, mom or dad, and. Have to be teaching a class at the time, or.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I'm.
The only reason I bring it up, I know what was happening, and I, I was, I told them I'd bring it up, I don't care either way, right, I brought it to you guys, that's my job.
I think it's something we can talk about, policy, policy can you talk about? Um, I would say, though, I think in terms of like, this policy, this policy is just about, you know, when and if. Uh, you know, a person who works here, but doesn't live in the district, can bring their kids. No, no, I, I understand, your concern though, I think applies to people who live here that have kids in the district as well, that's, you know, um. But I, I, so, but in terms of like, I don't think that necessarily is something that. Is specific to.
There might be something else that we already have covered, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, let's just go back and look, and if there's a personnel thing, we should probably talk about.
At a different time.
We can go back and look, yeah, yeah.
Thank, I, it's not inappropriate to bring it up. No, I agree, yeah, absolutely. I do agree with you on that. Sorry, I won't, I won't.
This was something that we talked about.
Yeah.
For a while, it started, your conversation started at the. I think it's a great policy, I think it's a great benefit.
Agreed. And we, um, edited it.
We got feedback, yes, yeah, yeah, put the feedback.
But yes, I would, if, if we don't have an existing policy, then I think it should be a conversation that the board has.
We can put it in our agenda for the next policy meeting, which is our next meeting, I think.
Or maybe the one after, because after that.
Oh, we'll have to reschedule.
Well, you took it. Okay, okay, okay.
And I guess in the meantime, can you, do you mind finding out what we have that's insisting that they cover that?
And we'll bring that to.
If there's anything, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, of course, and nothing else, I'll make a motion to bring the five policies on for second reading, not to approve, but five policies on. Second reading, second.
Thank, thank you, Jasmine, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favors in the pipe saying aye, aye, opposed, extensions, and motion carries.
Thank you for all your work on the policies, you make the policy committee's job very easy.
Up next is nominations, recommendations, and resolution.
So I gave you a copy of the list that I'd like to bring forward. Uh, the first one, um, would like to, for you to consider nominating as Megan Fool for our STEM educator. But in order for you to do that, you'd have to accept her resignation as the grade two.
So I'll make a motion to accept Megan Fool's grade two. Um, teacher resignation, and can we do the same and approve her nomination as STEM coordinator?
Educator.
Educator, sorry, thank you.
Well, second.
Thank you, Tammy, Jasmine, any further discussion? All those favors in the pipe saying aye, aye, opposed, extensions, and motion carries.
You want me to do these one at a time, or just to explain all of them? So Alexis Scavetta, um, Elementary Special Ed, replacing Paula Faith Horton, Elementary Education Grade One. Um, and Mary Beth Luen, Elementary Education Grade.
I'll make a motion to approve. Alexis Scavetta, Elementary Sped, Faith Horton, Elementary Ed, and Mary Beth Luen, Elementary Ed.
I just wanna share Faith Horton is new to this community, and she'll be moving her three children.
Oh, wow, what grades are they in?
Um, let's see if I can remember, I think it's second, fourth, and sixth.
That's awesome, fantastic.
Give me a ski.
Yes, she's legit, Kelly Ride, Mugler's Notch, and now here, and her husband is. Some big wig on.
Do they play baseball, because we need a team.
You know this now. Uh, yes, it's, uh, we invite President Mark, or excuse me, of Guessers, who's replacing the girls. He's been after him since Jane.
Fantastic.
And next Friday.
Good for him. Too bad for Little, good for him, yeah.
And then.
We had a motion and a second, did you second that?
So I don't know if she had it, she was in the hand around.
This is for the. The next set, when you're.
Any further discussion on those three nominations? Um, all those favors in the pipe saying aye, aye, opposed, extensions, and that motion carries.
Great.
Thanks.
And then you're just received the recommendation for support staff. Contracts and rehire, the switch you will see is that, uh. As we know, Bobby Donahue is retiring, and Tracy Bromlett is taking the position.
Are there any new names on here? I haven't seen any yet. I'll make. I'll make a motion to approve the support staff and other professional staff recommendations as presented.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you. Any further discussion?
Let's go back, yeah.
Hearing none, all those favors in the pipe saying aye, aye, opposed, extensions, and that motion carries.
And then an immediate, um, recommendation for hire for Maria. That's a, uh, that is.
And does that need action as well?
Yes.
Thank you, Tammy, from Kevin, all those favors in the pipe saying aye, 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 opposed, extensions, and the motion carries.
So we full staffed.
We dropped everything and.
Dropped everything and read?
Tired right now, and it's exciting for me.
Yeah, that's right. It's worth the effort.
It is. And I can tell you every, I, I just wanna share with you also, we got a lot of feedback and people calling and saying, hearing about really great things. In Linwood, where are you hiring? So it was, it was interesting for us all to get those conversations, so.
Right.
Your, the staff here just really being really good.
Great.
But you guys know that, but.
Yeah.
I saw it last year, but I really get to see.
Good stuff.
Thank you for asking that question, I didn't wanna brag.
All right, up next is, uh. Support staff contracts, that's we, you have that, okay. Uh, the loud plan, we did that, um, the D F A policy. So that's just our, we look at it and say we're satisfied with that sense of that, and we have a good early year.
Hasn't changed. We just have to market and review it every year, correct? We did.
Do you recommend any changes though?
No.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about that? All right, uh, Lauren bid. And that's.
Not yet, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we've seen two bids within the deadline.
Oh, that's.
To give you an update, but there's a substantial difference between the two, they both are within the warrant article, but we're. Talking, we're just comparing, make sure they are. There's such a big difference before we move forward with. So, we are, Marcus going through each bid and checking, see that they both include everything that we need.
Great.
Excellent. Well, that's good, good to see we're getting more than one bid.
Yes.
Um, lunch pricing.
Okay, we'll finish up the next meeting too, so, um, we're currently finalized, so that we put our lunch contract out to bid. And then we have to work with the state to, um, put together the contract, the final contract. And part of that includes lunch pricing for the new year. There's a spreadsheet we received from the state, it's called the paid lunch equity or key L E two box toolkit. That guides us in the lunch pricing for next year, I mean, ultimately, we can only increase our prices by ten cents. For a year, like for, you know, for breakfast or lunch for elementary school, middle and high school, but we still have to go through this analysis, and it gets. Um, put into our final contract with the state, but the toolkit hasn't come out yet, it doesn't usually come out till May, which is this kind of month early. Um, the agenda, so anyway, we'll, we'll hopefully have that at the next meeting, because usually that's a process that we go through, that you guys approve. Any lunch price increases, and it's also reflected in the final contract that gets approved by state. So, anyway, long story.
Thank you. Uh, grants twenty five, twenty six. That's our.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I will make a motion that, uh. To give the superintendent, and or doesn't need permission to seek, obtain, and expend any available funding to support or supplement the district's program by grants.
Thank Tammy, thank Kevin, for the touch on that. Hearing none, all those favors in the pipe saying aye, aye, opposed, extensions, and that motion carries. Uh, I don't see any other new or continuing business. We have. Those student representatives tonight, you have staff.
I have one thing from, uh, Dan Mitter. Said, some high school students have been working with Katie in a national organization called Getting to the Y. Training students and advisors to use a youth risk paper, your survey data to create positive change schools. Last week, Liz Roche Chu, I'm not sure I'm gonna say the last name, from Katie, came to talk to the group, which is, uh. Dalton, and, uh, Kimmy, and Keegan, Willa, Emma, Ally, and Teagan, to discuss the next steps in the action plan. And so they received the two twenty twenty three data from the Y R B S survey, in the whole, they got a treat to start going through it. Find areas of improvement, and so more updates will be coming in the next six months. Excellent. I have one thing, people, just.
We're gonna do, um, public, right?
Just so it's there, I don't know if he's online or whatever, but the, uh, the play, the, uh, at the. Jean's Playhouse, we've got like twenty one students, Linwood students doing, uh. The Lion, the Witch, the Wardrobe.
Twenty one?
I think it's, I think there's twenty one.
There's twenty one kids in the play, but they, they're primarily from Linwood, right?
I think, I think there's two or three that are not, uh, but the rest of them are, and it's. Um, I think second grade through, uh, high school, that, so, you know, well represented. Um, and there, it opens the ninth, it shows the ninth and tenth, I think there's one show the ninth and tenth on the tenth of May, so. Each tickets, it'll be sold out, I'm sure. And it's, I've been, I've accompanied some kids and, and, you know, sat in the back through like the table read, and some of the scene thing, and it's. It's gonna be awesome, it really is, we should all go.
They hired like this, this. Um, special person to deal with the education.
Yeah.
Part of Jean's Playhouse now.
And I'll tell you, they're doing a great job.
But they actually brought in someone specifically to work with the youth.
Yeah, okay.
They're just trying to develop that.
Oh, I didn't know it's on the education part.
Oh, I know, youth education, oh, I see, yeah. Oh, and fantastic, with, with the thirty cats, and she's successfully getting it done, yeah, yeah.
Great. Uh, let's see the community, so I guess we will, um, hold the board to go in a non-public to discuss. Uh, matters affecting. Uh, or adversely affecting reputation of a person.
Yeah.
Every, yes.
Yes.
Any, yes, yes.